Planning Board Meeting to order at 3:00 PM, which is a different time than usual. We're having a virtual meeting.
It's up on the TV.
Good, okay.
Refer to the clerk at this point for the announcement.
I am going to. Paul, would you do your thing?
I'd be glad. As far as I'm required to make this statement prior to the meeting. In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A, paragraph 20, relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, the April 14th, 2020 public meeting of the Falmouth Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. One, the meeting will be televised via Falmouth Community Television. Two, real-time public comment can be addressed to the planning board utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the chair via the chat function. Submitted text comments will be read into the record, excuse me, in the meeting. A Zoom login instructions, I think I'll bypass that. Number three, public comments may be seen in advance of the meeting. Your planning at falmouthma.gov at least five, five hours prior to the beginning of the meeting. Documents and audio or video files also be submitted via email. Submitted email comments and documents will be made a part of the meeting record and may be read into the record, summarized or displayed during the meeting at the discretion of the chair.
Thank you.
And applicants as well.
Thank you. Um, we have minutes on the agenda as the next item on the agenda, but I understand that we don't have any. Is that correct, Paul?
We're going to defer them to the next meeting.
Okay, so those have been deferred. So we're moving on to Planning Board discussion. The first is updates legislature on zoning deadlines. And Tom, you were going to handle that one.
If I may, Madam Chair. So, um, our screen share function, uh, this is the actual memorandum uh, that was sent out to the board. I am not going to, uh, to read it because you've had the opportunity to read it. I'm going to skip down essentially to, uh, the second page, uh, where we get to the meat of the argument. Uh, item number seven. So there is a suspension of all the statutory deadlines for planning boards, eliminating constructive grants, extending existing permits, and providing for e-filing of permits and applications through the duration of the emergency and 45 days after. So essentially, the clock has stopped ticking for everything that's going on until 45 days after the end of the declaration of emergency. Pam, uh, Barat is on the room. If you can elevate her, Thomas, I would appreciate that. Uh, so, under the law, the board has the discretion to choose how much business they wish to accomplish during the duration of the emergency. Essentially, the clock stops ticking for permitting deadlines and doesn't resume until 45 days after the state of emergency. Chairman Kerfoot in of Hive had a couple of conversations as to whether we may need to have some type of triage or priority system for applications. My goal has always been to have an application before the board at the earliest opportunity and as to how we might prioritize things in applications that involve keeping people and work on projects versus such an application which we have in the queue at just as pre the zoning freeze. That would be one example of where if we needed to prioritize something, we would prioritize a physical project over something that was essentially going to grandfather someone's zoning or some sort of policy discussion. So the options for the planning board are we can review all applications and, uh, do our business at previous rate. B, we can reduce the rate of applicant review as we find it technically restrictions make sessions too long and unwilling to do a full schedule. Or we could do no business at all and essentially say we're going to wait until after this, 45 days after this state of emergency and go back into business at that time.
I can barely hear him.
If, if the planning board, uh, if the planning board elect to proceed as usual for the time being, it may choose to slow down or suspend at any time in the future if members or staff become ill. Uh, the statutory framework does give the planning board significant flexibility to take how they come and react to evolving circumstances. This is a decision that can be made internally by the chair and staff or discussed among the planning board members during a public session with proper notice on the agenda. I would note that tonight is not that night to decide how we wish to proceed, but I'd like the board to understand those circumstances in moving forward, particularly with the staffing levels that we currently have as Cory is out at least through May 4th and potentially longer. If a vote is taken on a subject, please put the language open. It will be the most flexible and avoid the need to revote if there is an abrupt change in circumstances, members, staff, illness, technological problems, i.e. something the matter to authorize the staff to determine how many matters, if any, may be feasibly heard during a scheduled meeting in light of the evolving circumstances, including but not limited to the members of the staff and available. So that is essentially what Town Council has advised us. That is what I would like the board to sort of consider and we will have this back on the agenda for the 28th. A pretty good idea of what we've got as far as applications go to sort of make our way as to how we're going to proceed. If I was to, uh, to suggest a guess, I would venture to say the board would probably go with, uh, number B. Reduce rate of applications as we can work through with the technologies and staff that we have available to us.
Um, Tom?
Yes.
From IT. No, this is IT, Tom.
Thomas.
Yes, I'm here.
Thomas? Okay. There is interference with what I'm hearing. I don't know whether it's someone in, in the background got something on or what, but Tom Bott's voice would sometimes come and go and there was a screeching sound going across. I don't know if you can determine where that's coming from, but it is interfering with what I can hear.
I heard the same thing, Pat.
Okay.
I think it might have been background from either Pam or Paul's mics. I did see theirs light up a couple of times.
So if I may make a suggestion?
Yes.
Folks mute their microphone until they're ready to speak to something. That will eliminate some of the background noises that could come in. So it's typically a good practice for everyone to mute until they have something to say. You notice on the screen there'll be a mute next to your name. And, uh, if someone unmutes their microphone, it sort of indicates they're queued up to say something. So just a suggestion to keep the background noise down, just to mute your mic until you got something to add to the meeting. That's just a suggestion.
Okay.
Well said.
Thank you, Tom. Now, further than, okay, Tom, what I understand then is obviously we're down on staff with Cory because I think you had thought he would be able to work remotely from home. So we're down one full-time person, it seems. Um, therefore, it's probably bullet number two that we would be looking at because I don't see how we could potentially at all go at it with the same. Okay, I'm getting that swish, swoosh. Where, can you tell where that's coming from, Thomas?
No, I don't see any mics lighting up, just yours when you were talking.
That's very strange because it is an interference in the, in the quality of the sound. Anyway, so it looks like we would be, we don't have to make any decision now, but it looks like since we're down one full-time person, um, which is serious and Michaela is, or Melinda's coming in twice a week, I believe. Is that correct, Tom? Tom Bott, you're saying, but you don't have your mic on. Uh-oh. I guess Tom has turned his mic. Oh, there you go.
I was following that best management practice of, of shutting up and turning off my mic.
And never turning it back on.
Took a while for the digits to move around on the keyboard here and get back to where we were at. So, um, uh, so what we're, what we have going on right now is I'm here five days a week. Uh, and I am that person who makes sure there's someone in the office and we've got the opportunity to share files with everybody. Uh, Melinda is in two days a week to take care of businesses. We get things in, to be processed and scanned and distributed to folks. Uh, Michaela works remotely on her regular schedule, three days a week. Uh, Cory was hoping to work remotely. Uh, the management would have referred him to be in a day or two a week. Uh, but his, uh, he has a 10-year-old at home. Uh, his wife is a doctor in a hospital. Uh, and he did not think it was a good idea for him to try to come in because he has a 10-year-old, he can't leave it home. His in-laws are 60, 70 years old and live in different towns. Uh, so in the absence of being able to accommodate a schedule for Cory to work remotely, uh, he is currently on the federal leave and will not be reporting at all uh, until at some point he can come back to work. So we're down a full person because we couldn't accommodate that remote schedule for Cory. Uh, and, and, and that's where we're at now. Uh, we had, had a couple of different iterations trying to work through things, but at the end, uh, we couldn't meet the parameters that management wanted for staffing the office. And so Cory's, uh, not working at all for, uh, foreseeable future.
John.
At least until May 3rd or so, till we see what, what else is going on. Uh, so, uh, that said, uh, if we like, we can segue to the next screen about how we're actually doing business. Let's see how I do this time.
And that, that's the one that you have that's called Planning Board Business now that Town Hall is closed to the public.
Correct.
I think we need to tell Pam and John to start their video and their audio.
I'm on.
But your video isn't active. There it is.
I can see you, Jim.
Well, you just popped up right now. And I saw John, but he's, he's, he's not active either.
Hi.
John should click on his video and audio button on the left corner.
Well, and as we were just discussing, if you're just participating and watching, if you keep your mute on, uh, that minimizes the background noise through the rest of the, the meeting. You can hear, and when you're ready to chat, uh, you can just hit the button for, uh, to speak. Um, so, uh, memo number two, Planning Board Business Now That Town Hall Is Closed. So this is currently what we're doing. Uh, we have a daily Zoom meeting. Uh, previously, the staff and I met on Mondays and Wednesdays together. But now that we're working remotely, we have a daily Zoom meeting where the whole planning staff is present to discuss whatever ongoing projects we've got on, new business, and make sure folks know what they're taking care of and what they're supposed to be doing. Uh, we likely communicate more now that people are working remotely than we did when people were in the building because you knew you had the luxury of just walking next door and, and bringing folks together to chat about what's going on. So we have at least one, sometimes several Zoom meetings a day or a couple Zoom meetings a day to, to follow through on things. As far as phone calls go, if you've called the office, you've heard the message. It says we're mostly working remotely. If you leave a message, we will get back to you. Please leave an email address. Melinda checks those voicemails every hour uh, and lets me know if there's a message for something or emails back to folks. Uh, we have emails, everyone is connected to email 100% of the time while they're gone. So you send an email to anybody, it immediately shows up on their screen irregardless of where they're at. Uh, we get back to those, uh, folks right away. Uh, mail-wise, and I say right away as, as soon as applicable because I'm that sort of person who batches things. I am not the paddle lost dog who reacts to the bell. If an email comes in and I'm working on something else, it'll sit till I've got to the point where I can pay full attention to it. So I, don't expect me to email you right back. Uh, and Chairman Kerfoot, she's the chairman and she knows. That kid does not email back right away, so my fault. Nothing, nothing personal. So, mail-wise, uh, because of this whole direct contact sort of thing and the staying power of the virus on various, uh, documents and papers and plastics and things like that, anything that comes in the mail sits for 48 hours after it arrives. Uh, if you put it in the mailbox out back, there are three mailboxes out back that we share with Building Department. If something comes in in that box, it comes in and it sits in a box for 48 hours and after 48 hours, we open it. Same thing with mail. It comes in from, uh, through, uh, regular mail. Uh, and that is what the Building Department is, uh, is doing and that's what they have advised us to do. So who works on application? Applications to be dropped off at Town Hall. There's a box out back at the entrance to the rear of the building, to the building, uh, by the Building Department. Except definitive plans, and we had one just recently filed to, uh, the grandfathering for the dome project. Under Massachusetts law, it says that, uh, you can submit a preliminary plan either by sending it in through certified mail or delivering it to a meeting of the planning board. And since you can't get into a meeting of the planning board, we've advised folks to just send it in the mail to us. And what we want to do is make sure the clock is ticking for folks. So if you go through these channels, it gets to the town clerk's office, it gets stamped, and the clock is ticking even though it was just discussed under the state of emergency and the legislation, the acts of, uh, chapter 53 of 2020. Uh, the clock is ticking if we decide to let it start ticking. So if you have an application, you can mail it, you can email it. We are setting up a process for electronic submissions as well. We're working with Town Council and the Town Clerk on that. So people will be able to electronically submit things as well. Uh, so that plan's submitted when it comes to the meeting. We get it in the mail and we send it in there. Uh, so things, we get an application in uh, and those two days a week when Melinda is here, presuming that the applicant, the mail has been here for 48 hours, she scans all that stuff and she sends it out to everybody in the staff. So we typically have, we've got a site plan review or an application review. Is it either Cory or Melinda takes the lead on that, looks at it, does the analysis, shares it with the rest of us to check it. And for the most part, Cory and Melinda are the, are the, the, the eyes on that. And I am, you know, looking at the big picture on those sort of things, but they're the boots on the ground for those applications. And with Cory out, that's going to be a little slower because Melinda's going to be looking at them and I'm going to be looking at them as time permits. Uh, and, and time will permit. Uh, I'm fortunate, I get to work as many hours as I want. I put in like 56 hours last week, but we can't do that forever and ever and ever. So we're processing things as quickly as we can and sort of using this triage method to figure out what goes on. So Melinda gets them, she scans them, she sends them out to everybody. Presently, IT is working on setting up VPN for people's computers, virtual private network that will allow staff members to access any file that's on their computer here. Presently, if it's in one of the shared drives and they can't get to it, I can and I will forward that to them. We have VPN set up for all those folks. Uh, then they will be able to access their files. In the interim, either Melinda or I forward those things to Cory when he's working for Michaela. As Jim Fox knows, uh, the GIS is not working off-site right now. And that is an issue, a technology issue they're trying to work through. The staff can't get to that either, but when they have VPN on their computers, they will be able to from afar. So right now, uh, we're just toast on using GIS off the site. And as, uh, I think Peter Johnson Staub forwarded Jim a message that said we got some technical issues, some server issues, and they're still down a person in IT. And frankly, as you see, the good folks at IT are working today to support us. And one of the reasons I wanted to have this meeting at 3:00, so they would have one last night to do this sort of stuff. So thank you, folks, for accommodating, uh, us and the folks at IT. Uh, so that's where we're at. We are moving the ball as best we can. We're using the technology that we're gracious enough to have. Uh, we'll be prioritizing things and we're working with the limited staff that we've got to move the ball as much as we can. Now, we also have a responsibility in working with the Historic Commission in processing those things. And that is Cory's function in the office. So after this meeting, I'll be talking with Ed Hadad about how things work with the Historic Commission because they are also a regulatory body and they're also supported by the Planning Board. Whether you have a demolition delay request, but like such as the Nimrod, whether you have a certificate of, uh, appropriateness for work done in a, a house in historic districts. Those are things that keep people working. If you get your permission to do your rehab on your historic house, those are regulatory matters and things that I feel are important to move the ball on, to allow people to keep working at things and keep moving the ball and being able to feed their families wherever they may happen to be. So we do not have the expertise that Cory has for historic. So I'll be talking with Ed Hadad about what we can do to help support that. Uh, I frankly don't have the opportunity to sort of learn that housing, the, the historic, uh, uh, ways and means at this point to, and lend a lot of support. But, uh, one of the functions out of the planning office is not just helping you glorious folk, it's also helping the folks on the Historic Commission who typically have a fairly full plate at some times. Uh, so that is what the state allows us to do and that is what we're doing as best we can to comply and make some of those things happen.
Does anybody have any questions of Tom? Yes, Charlotte.
Uh, Tom, I wonder, do you have any sense of whether the, uh, developers and builders are going ahead at their normal pace or they are sheltering in place? Or how much business is coming in? Because it looks as if under the rules, um, tie, it's musical chairs. When the music starts again, everything that's come in is going to be due within 45 days.
Correct, and, uh, uh, that's a good question. Uh, and I'll give you an example. Uh, in the case of our next item on our agenda, Little Farm Request for a Bond Release, uh, we received an email from, uh, Mr. Hadad saying, "I want to get my bond released." And so we let him know, well, here's the form you've got to fill out. Here's the application you send, you have to put it in print. But as soon as we got that notice that he wanted to do that, we immediately sent it out to engineering and everybody else to say, "We've got this thing coming. Let us know what's going on." So while the deadline for this is May 10th, we're able to release that money today because we started the wheels in progress even before we had an application. So we've got that opportunity to front-load something to get some work done. We will do that, but we are trying to, said, move the ball and prioritize things. Uh, there are a number of applications that are in now, a number that are pending that we're working on. Uh, we'll have a full slate of those, uh, at our meeting on the 28th. We've got a few of them to share with you at the end of this meeting. So we'll move those as best we can. But as I said before, if I've got an application for someone who's building an apartment building and an application for somebody who wants to, uh, do a, a zoning, a subdivision, uh, to preserve their zoning, we would likely not prioritize working on a subdivision plan to preserve their zoning. We'd work on the application for the apartment building because in the case of that zoning freeze, that delay in time is just going to give them more cover and more protection for their zoning at some point in the future. If it moves sticks and bricks, if it puts people to work, if it moves the economy along, those will be our priorities in trying to get those things done.
My question was really about the volume of business. What you said, maybe Jim has, uh, some feeling for that too.
We've got four or five things in. Uh, there are some folks, people who've been through this thing before and looking at the burgeoning economy, thinking there could be some tailing off of applications in the future. That may be so, but we're going to try to process everything we've got in as soon as we can.
Jim, you had a comment or question?
Well, I have a couple of things. One, if somebody could call John Drooly. He is unable to connect both either his video or his audible. I think he just needs a little help. Uh, maybe one of the staff members could reach out to him. He's trying.
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, good, yes?
Okay.
And then?
Okay, John seems to...
Yeah, I'll, I'll get in touch with them about having them dial in.
Okay. Are you finished, John, uh, Jim?
No, and, and also to answer the question, I think, uh, there are, there are projects that are in the works and some of them are very time-sensitive for developers. And I, I think we, we will really hurt people if we shut, if we shut down and start dealing with it. So the sooner we work out the kinks and get this system working, I would encourage us to, to do that.
Paul? Paul? Turn your audio on, yeah.
Um, my only comment is this letter from Mr. Hadad on March 24th does not specifically refer to the project on the, on, uh, Little Farm Lane. Is that indeed same project? This is likely to refer specifically to that project.
Yes, it does. That map and lot number is for that parcel.
Okay.
Okay, if you're finished, I am asking any concerns, questions of Tom. Does anybody else have anything for Tom? Okay, then we should move on to Little Farm Lane Request for a Bond Release. And you will see, as you referred Paul to this, uh, letter from Steve Hadad, and Tom? Okay, here we go. No, that's not the one you want to bring up, Tom. There you go.
Yep, my, my, uh, my little thing for screen share gets in the way of my windows on my windows.
Ah-huh.
So, uh, this is in fact, uh, a request for, uh, release from bond for, uh, Little Farm Lane. Uh, we had originally, uh, he originally asked for, uh, a release for the surety in, uh, January of, uh, 2019. Wasn't quite ready, uh, asked again in September 2019. We did another inspection, he wasn't quite ready. Uh, we did an inspection on March 10th. Uh, and he's, uh, about as ready as he's going to be. There are a couple of minor things that the Engineering Division has identified. I can go through them for you or I can spare you, uh, the time and the minutia to say that they have substantially complied with the requirements of the development. And I would recommend that the board vote to release the surety, uh, $12,000. Uh, so he can use that money to work on the West Falmouth Development that he's got a number of issues on, that working through that we'll be talking about on the 24th of, uh, or the 28th of April.
Does anybody have any questions of Tom on this issue? Normally, we do move that based upon the town planner's recommendation. Tom?
Yes, the, uh, the, the practice that we have done on any vote is to make a roll call vote. So we're well aware of everyone who voted. So if we, we make a vote on this, if we could do a roll call vote, uh, and so we can record that vote properly.
Yeah, we have to in this case. Will somebody please make a, a motion to, um, the words are failing here.
I move that release the bond. But what's the name of the site?
Uh, Little Farm Lane.
Little Farm Landing.
And it's in, in the amount of $12,000, Jim.
The amount of $12,000, yep.
Second. Second. Been moved and seconded, moved by Jim, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, and as Tom said, we have to do this by roll call vote. So I move in favor of it.
Box in favor.
I'm sorry?
I'm in favor.
Okay.
I'm in favor.
Okay, I'm, please your name, Pam?
Pam Harding Barrett.
Perfect.
Charlotte Harris in favor.
Rob Leary in favor.
Paul Dryer in favor.
And we don't have John's audio yet, correct?
Not yet.
That'll, that'll carry the day.
I, I wanted to point out, there's a little trick on the audio. If you just hit your spacebar, it allows you to toggle in and out of the audio. It's easier to find than reaching for that video switch.
All righty, so with that, we will prepare, uh, the, the documentation and, uh, and, uh, release those $12,000. Uh, as I, uh, said before, uh, and I've emailed you, I've kind of kept you apprised of some of the discussion we've been having in the field about, uh, the Louis Larry subdivision, also known as King Pot, King Hills Lots, about some of the particulars we're having there with the installation of a water main, uh, on the site. about some of the particulars we're having there with the installation of a water main on the site. So that will be on our agenda for the twenty-eighth.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. The next on the agenda is determination of access Fender slash Lewis Neck Road. And as you know, there's been a lot, thank you, that's come up nicely. There's been a lot going on there, Falmouth Housing Trust and Bill Fender with his desire for a couple of lots. On his lot, he's got a big undeveloped parcel there and he wants a couple of lots. So he very kindly has cleared the roadway to eighteen feet, thirteen feet overhead. And that's Falmouth Housing Trust. And Tom, would you like to carry this forward in discussion?
If I may.
Tom?
So in February two thousand nineteen, I had my first conversation with Mr. Fender about splitting his lot. The one you see down here highlighted in yellow at the bottom of the screen, forty oh three zero zero one B zero zero zero. And at that point, I explained to him what the rules are for subdivision regulations, what the rules are for rights of way, what the rules are for access, and essentially told him he really didn't have a viable path to get to that point. And so he didn't move before his application, but apparently was having quite a few conversations with the neighbors at the time about the prospects for working with him to grant him access and potentially easements to allow him to widen and pave Lewis Neck Road. So when the Planning Board approved a determination of access for Falmouth Housing Trust on eleven five nineteen, Mr. Fender filed an A and R plan for his property the next day, hoping for similar circumstances that the board had granted FHT. I let Mr. Fender know that those circumstances for the board's approval were unusual and unprecedented and would likely not be repeated for his property. And discussing this with Town Council to make sure that the board did not set a precedent by approving a determination of access for one property and the next one, even though it's next door, might be different. Town Council replied, "We had not set any sort of precedent and we could put whatever sort of conditions the board felt appropriate at that point." So we've had a couple of conversations with Mr. Fender since that time. And Falmouth Housing Trust was granted an access easement that essentially said, "If you get it eighteen feet wide and thirteen feet high, we will approve a determination of access." The board did so. Both parties applied for a building permit at the end of February. And neither were allowed to pull their building permit because those conditions had not been met. Trees and shrubbery and things like that, they were obstructing the fire department, were on private property. Mr. Fender having a relationship with those folks on those private properties because he had said, "If you work with me on this thing, I'm going to pave the road so I can get an extra lot down the street." So within forty-eight hours of Rod telling me that they couldn't get a building permit, we were out there the next day with Mr. Fender identifying the trees and shrubs that were in the way. By Thursday, he had had all those removed and cleared out of the way. So Falmouth Housing Trust was able to immediately get their building permit. Mr. Fender cannot get his building permit until the board votes a determination of access for his property. And so based on what we had done prior to for Falmouth Housing Trust, I am recommending that the board consider granting a very similar determination of access for Mr. Fender so he can get a building permit for one lot. Any other work, any other division of that property to create the second lot, which is the whole reason he got into this thing initially, would require a more hardy, the, what's the term I'm trying to say here? A much more hardy determination of access. And let me see if I can get to that, if I can get around this. There we are. So this is the draft determination access that I put together with those requirements on it. That Lewis Neck Road from Irene to the subject property will be cleared of trees or brush for its length from Irene across the frontage of his parcel, forty oh three zero zero one B zero zero to width of eighteen feet and thirteen feet. The Lewis Neck Road will have the potholes filled in front of his property, forty zero three zero zero one zero zero B. That this determination is not an applicant for allow him to go onto some other places' private property for that purpose. The determination is applied only to this parcel, forty zero three zero zero one B, and is a finding of no other properties along Lewis Neck Road and is eligible for a similar determination of access. And then any future lots created by the division of parcel forty zero zero three zero zero one zero zero B will require another determination of access. It will require substantial upgrades of Lewis Neck Road, including pavement and drainage. So this is crafted this way in a two-step process because Mr. Fender's been working with utilities. He would like to have gas on the, down the street for his property. Eversource will not give him gas to the property unless he has a foundation in the ground on his piece of property. If we were to take a one-step process as we originally determined and said, "Mr. Fender would have to widen the road, pave it, put in the drainage to get his building permit," he would do all that stuff and then have to rip it up and put a trench down the middle of it for the gas main. By allowing him to move forward with one lot for determination of access that he can pull a building permit for, that'll give him the opportunity to apply to Eversource to get the gas main to go all the way down the street to allow everybody on the street to tie into it. And then after that gas main is in place, he would come back with a second determination of access, bringing us plans, I've been talking to Mark Burcelli for a couple of months now, on paving, the drainage and the access to the site. So based on the fact that Mr. Fender was dead in the water on February nineteenth and because of the board's graciousness to the Falmouth Housing Trust in producing a determination of access for their benefit, I would recommend that the board move this determination of access to allow him to put the wheels in progress, to improve the neighborhood, to bring gas in, to put the pavement in, so he can come back to us with an A and R in the future based on complying with the determination of access that will be much more substantial than this one. It will include drainage, roadways, plans and all that good stuff.
Okay, now, Tom, this was not in our packet of information.
The draft determination of access was not. Basically, that story and all the things that we had talked about, about trying to get to this point and make sure that widening the road and the two-step process, that was in there. This is the exact same determination of access we did for Falmouth Housing Trust. It has just been amended to deal with Mr. Fender's property.
I realize that, but you know, the words are familiar. It wasn't in our package.
It was not. As you know, I've been up past my bedtime a couple nights and I probably should have had this in your package last week.
Does anybody have any questions of Tom? Yes, Paul?
The access that Mr. Fender's referring to, will that meet the requirements of the Planning Board? Eighteen feet wide plus the vertical clearance?
He is required to clear the way eighteen feet wide and thirteen feet high, yes.
I read down to his property only, or is he going to continue past that point?
He's going to his property only.
Thank you. But that would include the access to Falmouth Housing Trust.
Yeah, that will go from Irene at the north all the way down to, so let's bring it back up on the map here. So Fender's property here, where the arrow's at. So all this from the bottom of the screen, all the way up will be cleared eighteen feet. In fact, it is already cleared eighteen feet wide. That eleven hundred and thirty-six feet, it's already eighteen feet wide. It's already thirteen feet high, as inspected by myself in the fire department last week.
And that is why the Falmouth Housing Trust, Paul, was able to get its building permit.
But there's two properties beyond Mr. Fender's property. Is that included?
They are not.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Is he going to be paving anywhere on the road? Or is that agreement with the neighbors about paving at all still applying? Or is that withdrawn? Or is he just going to pave in front of his property?
No, he will be paving from Irene all the way down to his property.
Okay.
Not in this instance, right now, he's just clearing.
Yeah, later. Yeah.
After the gas line's in, he'll be back with a second determination of access with an engineered plan that shows the paving and the drainage before he gets any other building permits on the site.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, then, Tom, if you could flip it back to the motion that you would like made. Okay, would somebody please make that motion that is on the screen? Bob, do you want to do it?
I'll move the motion to the determination of access for one dwelling sixty-three Lewis Neck Road. He's Falmouth Mass, Falmouth Census Map, number forty zero three zero zero one B zero zero B.
Second?
Well, should he read more of it into the record, Tom?
If we would.
Okay. So you want me to read the digits, number one, two, three, four, five?
No, no, that, any creation of a division of the park.
Just the top part there?
Yeah.
Moves that the board approved determination of access for one dwelling at sixty-three Lewis Neck Road based on the conditions shown below and that any future lots created from the division of parcel zeros four zero three zero zero one B zero 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 B will require another determination of access that will require substantial upgrades of Lewis Neck Road, including paving and drainage. Should I do it?
I think that should do it, Tom.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay.
Second?
Paul Dryer.
Paul?
Yes, I second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded and we need to do a roll call vote on this. I voted yes on it.
Pat, could you call people off? I think it would be easier if you called people to vote.
Okay, so Paul?
I agree.
Bob?
I agree.
Jim?
I agree.
Pam?
I agree.
Charlotte?
I agree.
Did I miss anybody? I don't think I did. Okay, I don't think John is on yet, is he?
Got him back?
He needs to trigger his mic.
Well, is this picture?
He just did it. Give him a second.
So it says, "We sent an email to my email address. Click the confirmation link in that email to begin using Zoom."
We got you, John. Hit video.
We were just taking, we were just taking a vote on Lewis Neck Road. Did you, were you in on that discussion, John?
I have my email on my phone and it's not coming through.
Oh, okay.
I believe Adriana is working through with him right now. That's probably who he is speaking with.
Okay, so he still cannot vote on this issue?
So we've got the super majority of the board. We just needed a simple majority.
Yeah, got all six of those who can hear and that participate.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanted to point out that I'm also watching it on FCTV and all the documents are illegible on FCTV. They're crystal clear on my screen. But FCTV, I can't read. I don't know if the public can. We're showing these documents and they're really blurry.
That's why there is this shakedown journey of ours right now.
Point it out, because I'm trying to do both at the same time and it's illegible on the television. So the folks that aren't watching online can't read what's on this TV.
Thank you, Jim. That's something, that's a problem that FCTV is going to have to work on then before our next meeting. And it probably, if it's true for us, it's probably true for any other board that's trying to show something that's not coming through on the TV very well. Thank you very much for your comment. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. It's the conditions of Crowell Road. And as you know, we were scheduled to do a site visit out there. It would be probably difficult and maybe frowned upon if we met as a group. And as I understood, we hadn't arranged anything with the owner, the Osels. They have to do with, they wanted us to weigh in on a potential subdivision there. And so, Tom, has there been any further communication with the Osels to see whether we could do a site visit even?
There is not, if I may. Is my audio on? By the way, I don't have my screen in front of me. Am I audible?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The picture's not up there because I'm screen sharing. So after the Planning Board last month, I contacted Tom Bunker to let him know that he may hear from the Osels and may get a request to stake the property. Tom and I talked a couple of times. I formed a copy of the plan. I don't know what's going on. I have not heard back from the Osels or from Mr. Bunker since that time. As I said previously, this has been fascinating, the history of Crowell Road and I spent a ton of time and learned a lot of stuff about what's been going on out there. So the graphic you see in front of you is a compilation of what is Crowell Road over the years. So essentially, what we have right now is Crowell Road is a subdivision road up to the point where my cursor is at, right here, where it says Thomas ended existing subdivision. That is essentially a thirteen-hundred-foot-long dead-end road. The subdivision regulations call for five-hundred foot is the maximum length for a dead-end road. In order to make that lot buildable for Lot sixty-three, the Thomases who submitted a subdivision plan in two thousand seventeen were required to make improvements in front of their property sixteen feet wide, sixteen feet wide packed gravel that you see here. And that, those improvements were only for one additional lot, essentially for their lot. So to get to the Osels property, that's another four hundred and ninety-seven feet of road improvements that will have to be made. So here on the left side of the screen, you're seeing the property in front where the improvements have been made to sixteen feet. And here you're seeing in front of the Osels, that's their driveway in front of my car and their frontage goes off to the right. And as you can see, it's particularly narrow. So we have in Crowell Road that very long dead-end dirt road. And pavement ends here, eight hundred and ninety feet where you see the mouse at. Gravel's about that same width for the rest of Crowell Road to this point. When it turns the corner, it's that single-track-ish sort of sixteen-foot-wide pavement, not single-track, but sixteen-foot-wide of gravel compacted to this point. And at this point left, it's just basically looks like that dirt road the rest of the way around. Where you see that little funny cartoon of my car, that's where the car was parked at. So there's an additional four hundred and fifty-nine feet of improvements required to make this roadway suitable. This was not an A and R plan as I originally anticipated. If you look at the application, the package that I sent you, it was actually a preliminary subdivision plan. And that preliminary subdivision plan anticipating they would have to make upgrades because as Jim pointed out before, it's not really a road. And if we call it a road, it gets a different sort of meaning in life. It's essentially a sort of an old common driveway that folks do use to that purpose. So that's where we're at. I wanted to get this information to the board. So if the board wants to go out there for a site visit, you'll fully understand where the pavement is, where the gravel is, where improvements have been made and what the condition of the road is to get around the corner. The board has the ability to waive its subdivision regulations if there's some compelling public purpose. But to point out that essentially our five-hundred foot is our length, some length for a dead-end road and we're right now at twelve hundred and twenty-five feet for a dead-end dirt road, or a combination of dirt road. And there likely would be some extensive improvements to be made at Crowell Road. And how the board feels about that is up to the board. But that's the circumstance that's out there. And if we want to set up a site visit, happy to do that. We'll let the Crowells know, I mean, the Osels know that the board's quite game to go out there and take a look at the property.
Does anybody have any questions or comments at this point? Jim?
I have real concern, starting with Lewis Neck and what we did there. We are creating what I think is a very dangerous situation for very, very long dead-end roads. And I know we did Lewis Neck because we were trying to help out a non- And I know we did Lewis Neck because we were trying to help out a nonprofit, but I think we went that, that's done. Bender's Lot was always a lot. It wasn't a subdivision. That's just a single-family lot. We can push him harder on the next one. But where the hell are they going to get access in an emergency on this one?
Tom?
Well, if I may, regarding Lewis Neck Road, there is actually the possibility for Lewis Neck Road to connect to Carroll at some point in the future.
Agreed.
Carroll is a private way. The right-of-way does come all the way up to Lewis Neck, and it's conceivable at some point in the future that could be connected to go through.
Kind of why I went along with it, but where's that going to happen here?
I don't know. You got an opportunity down here for that. But once again, we don't necessarily want to talk about the merits of their project. I just want to point out what the conditions are, so the board can fully understand what the conditions are. Get out there for a site visit, and then meet with the Osels and give them our take.
I'd like to do a site visit and see it staked. I saw a request for staking, but I didn't see that it was done, so I didn't bother going and looking at it. I've driven down the road several times over many years. But boy, we're going to see, I would like to see it all staked out and understand it a little better before we talk, before we do any voting on it.
Pat, when we first had this in, I went out to take a look and did drive down and drove all the way down to what I thought was what they were trying to do, this house, where the road doesn't go to it, you can get there, and it's a very narrow, confusing area to be in. It would have to be staked. But I wonder, I couldn't picture any public purpose served, and I wonder if they attempted an argument in that direction. I can't imagine what it would be.
Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this?
Yeah, Pat, it's Pam. I'm just concerned because the length of that road, that twelve-hundred feet, I'm just concerned down the road, we have a five-hundred-foot limit right now. We approve this, and then we have somebody that comes in and says, "Well, and I lived through this before, so I am very loathe to approve this." The next person that came in wanted seven hundred and fifty-six feet. And why shouldn't, we were being arbitrary and capricious because they had already done five-hundred feet, so what difference does it make? But if we go now up to twelve-hundred feet, then it sort of opens the door for everything between five-hundred feet and twelve-hundred feet. And I think we just have to be really careful, which is why we need the bylaws to protect us.
So I. It wouldn't only be twelve-hundred feet, Pam, because you'd be adding another four hundred and fifty-nine.
Right, exactly. So anyway, I think we have to be very cautious about this.
Is there anyone, yes, Bob?
So at that point, do we start requiring what the subdivision control laws require for road services at that point? Because I can see ourselves getting down a dead end with this kind of situation that keeps cropping up. So what we should do is extend where the road is paved. You extend that all the way down and continue with it. Because we seem to have paved road, going to a gravel road, going to a dirt driveway situation. It diminishes as it goes further, and it really shouldn't. It should improve as it goes deeper, because if you're trying to get emergency vehicles into a place like that, you actually need the roads to be better if they're going in further.
Tom?
So the decision of the planning board in two thousand and seven for the Thomas property, which is essentially where the end of the most recent improvements were at, stated that this is adequate for one additional lot and will not require a forty-foot wide road layout, which sort of implies that if anybody was going to do something more significant, more substantial, they would certainly need to be expanding the road layout. There's a thirty-foot layout in front of sixty-three. There's a thirty-foot layout in front of between sixty-one and sixty-four. But this little part that goes between the two of them right here where the cursor's at is about twenty feet wide. So you're hard-pressed to find something without, you know, asking your neighbor for some property to create a larger way. Typically, we look at subdivision and trying to put in a road. There's a cost to that, and usually you have to net a couple of lots to justify that cost. So the economics of things being what they are is up to them. But the board was pretty consistent in two thousand and seven, which I've seen for most places. If you want to create access, well, first off, you've got a, you've got a five-hundred, sixteen-hundred-foot-long, fifteen-hundred-foot-long dead-end road with no access, and how do you make that emergency access? How do you make it wider? How do you make it accessible? It's a slog, and that's essentially, without him saying it directly to me, to Tom Bunker, went, "Well, yeah," he kind of nodded and said, "Yeah, they've got, they've got some work to do."
Jim?
Yeah, if, when Tom's referring to a lot, if he could use his cursor, because on the graphic that I can see, although it is more illegible than the TV, I still can't see the lot numbers. So he's referring to lots, and I don't know what he's talking about. He said Lot sixty-three, sixty-two.
Cursor right here at sixty-three.
Your cursor's not showing up.
All right, it's white with the black outline.
Oh, there it is, yeah. You should switch your cursor to a big black arrow. It'd be a lot more visible. That's what's wrong. It's a white arrow on a white background.
Put that on.
Next time.
Yep. So yeah, that's where the improvements end, right there at that line.
Okay, I thought the improvements end way up in the sub, doesn't it turn to a dirt road? As you come in Crowell, and it goes by Sunrise, doesn't it immediately turn to dirt road right there? Part of that pink section isn't that dirt?
The right here where you see eight hundred and ninety-five, eight hundred and seventy-five feet pavement ends?
Yes, okay.
That's where the pavement ends. It's gravel, same width for the next two hundred and eleven feet to here. And then as it comes around the corner, it goes to just that sixteen-feet-wide path in the green.
I got it now.
Pavement to here, gravel to here, dirt and stone to here.
How did they get Lot sixty-six approved?
Ma'am?
Lot sixty-six, and you can see the numbers on the paper that you dropped off on my doorstep. How did Lot sixty-six ever get permitted?
That is from the subdivision below it. That doesn't get its access off of this property.
Well, when you drive over there, when you drive over there, the road that the construction people, because they're actually building that, and that they're, what they're using for construction is in fact what shows in green here. That's how they're driving in.
Yeah, so sixty-nine gains its frontage from the road to the south of it. I don't, you can't see it on the map here, but that's one of the fascinating things I found in here. We got a nineteen-fifty subdivision from an excavating company that created this parcel here, and the one sixty-nine just south of it. Similarly, there's others that get their access from elsewhere. So you drive to it, but its legal frontage is south of there.
Okay, I've been listening to this whole discussion, and I'm just going to make a comment here to the effect that we all seem to be, myself included, rather opposed to any kind of subdivision there unless there would be substantial expense for the Osels. And I'm not sure that they would want to do that. I think maybe Tom should make an appointment and speak with them and tell them what likely we would be asking, and that would be for substantial paving, to even be able to think about subdividing their lot. He can't speak definitively to that, but based upon the comments I'm hearing here and the disquiet and their mind as well, the length of the road, the surface of the road, the width of the road, it gets very disturbing, as Jim said, and as Pam said, what's next? So, Tom?
I will be happy to reach out to the Osels and ask if they would have the property staked. I'll be happy to reach out to Mr. Bunker and let him know that we had this conversation. If the Osels want to move forward with staking the property, we'll do the site visit, and we'll have that conversation about what might be necessary to make those improvements on the property.
How does the board feel about that?
That sounds good to me.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. One other comment, though, are we getting to the point where we need to have some other type of regulation for these types of situations? Maybe not a forty-four-foot road layout, but maybe scale it down to a thirty-foot road layout or some other road layout to address these situations? Because it isn't an actual subdivision that would come into subdivision control law. But we keep getting into these situations where we've got these little dirt paths, and people want to subdivide property, and yet we still want to have proper access to them. But we don't want to break the bank by requiring someone to pave a thousand feet of road to get into it. Is that something that we could talk about in the future?
Tom?
That is the subject of our draft determination of access policy, which I'll be happy to have on our next agenda if you would like. Because it's what we talked about previously. We can revisit that. And that process involves discussions with the hearing and the fire department and things like that, and making that determination that says essentially, A, you can, you are able to achieve a determination of proper access if you do X, or based on the review of these technical folks, I'm sorry, you are not able to achieve that access. And I think having that determination of access policy in place will motivate folks to say, "I'm going to sit pat with what I have," or actually, "Now that I know what I have to do, can I achieve those conditions? And would I want to go out and hire somebody to try to make that thing happen?" So our meeting on the twenty-eighth, determination of access, is penciled in, and I would be happy to move that along and get a full draft, you guys, what we talked about previously for the twenty-eighth.
That would be good.
Okay. Could I ask a question about that?
Yes, Charlotte.
It seems to me that the Conservation Commission might take an interest in that, because the rules that we have now actually limit access. That's why we're getting pushed up against. And how much access do we want to afford to the backland all over town? We ought to be thinking about that at the same time.
The Conservation Commission is on the list of folks in our draft determination of access policy that we solicit their input.
Anybody else wish to make comments on this? Okay, then Tom will contact Mr. Bunker and the Osels and have the property staked. And presumptively, they will take into consideration that we're likely to ask for some substantial improvements and determine whether they want to move ahead or not.
Is there some way that we could learn the history on why the length of the dead-end streets was set at five-hundred feet?
Tom?
Thinking on that.
Tom?
New York City, nineteen eighteen. Next question.
They weren't thinking then? We don't know why.
True story, for the most part, that length cul-de-sac, it's sort of like Jim will tell you, no one has ever written condo docs. One guy wrote the first ones, and everybody's changed them ever since. So in New York City, under subdivision regulations, because of limitations for fire equipment, they had a number. It might have been three hundred and fifty, might have been five hundred feet. That was the maximum length they could pump water through a fire hose. So that number, which was created in New York City in nineteen eighteen, I might be confusing it with the pandemic from nineteen eighteen, but essentially, that number has carried sway for years and years and years. Towns have tweaked that. Towns have tweeted to say, "Oh, we'll go with seven hundred and fifty. We'll go with six fifty." But the number is typically a three-digit number. I've never seen a four-digit number for a dead-end road.
Thank you.
But there are a number of them here in Falma.
Yes, there are.
I live on one.
I drove down that one the other day.
Yeah. So, okay, so I think we've beaten this issue to death at this point right now. And Tom will go ahead and follow through on that.
Did Mr. Dryer have something he was mentioning that I see?
I was trying to comment.
Oh, yes, Paul. See, I only see four faces here, so somebody's got to say something for me to recognize.
I've been out there twice. It's a very confusing area, where the property lines, where the roads are and so forth. And I'm pleased to hear the determinative access policy. But I also agree with Jim. I think we need to get out there and look at that before we rule on this particular project as well.
Okay. Anybody else? Please speak up. Okay? Tom, did you want to say something else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so we go on to future agendas for pending applications, and that is that whiteboard.
Yes, in our pantheon of unreadable documents on TV, may exhibit, exhibit, exhibit C here. My chicken scratch on a grease board, which is a photograph in a document scanned and sent to your inbox. My apologies for our lousure cave art technology here. So every Tuesday, first Tuesday of the month, we send you our calendar, and we've sort of done this casual sort of thing, and we're still getting up to speed and putting something together and print for you. So this is what we have looked at as far as April goes, as our, as our future meeting. There's things that could be on the agenda for April. The amendments to the housing production plan. Mr. Haddad's lot release we just did, I'm actually, Mr. Haddad's covenant release for Louis Larry, which will be scheduled for the twenty-eighth. Determination of access policies we'll have on the twenty-eighth. We have no application for Cumberland Farms yet. We still have a non-binding recommendation to do for Williams Road First Street acceptance when town meeting occurs. And as you may have noticed, in the top of the first memo that we've got.
There he is. John just showed up.
The legislation passed. The legislation passed allows town meeting to be stayed for a while. So the removal of the requirement for town meeting to be held by June thirtieth during a state of emergency, and the ability of moderate to repeatedly renew that thirty-day recess in the continuance of town meeting during the state of emergency. The town has ten days after your initial recess to report that. So town meeting's pushed out to whenever. We have to have that non-binding recommendation in prior to town meeting. But it's pretty simple. Board had a question about what that thing's going to look like at the end of the day. We could easily put that on the agenda for April twenty-eighth, and rest easily knowing we don't have to deal with it again. We just dealt with Little Farm subdivision, bond release, and then the Dome definitive plan. The Dome definitive plan went on here prior to the state of emergency, and as discussed previously, I feel fairly comfortable that that can be pushed out at some point into the future. Regarding those applications that we have currently that are coming across our threshold, we have a detached accessory housing unit. It's an incomplete application. We've got the covenant release for King Pine Louis Larry subdivision. We've got a special permit for a storied, for another building on Five Thirty Old Meeting House Road. We have another accessory housing unit coming in for Hay Pay Way. Maybe it's Hay Pay Drive. Hay Pay Way sounds like a lot of alliteration. So those are the things we've got coming up. And as soon as those applications are complete, those are those sort of things that I would like us to be moving forward with, particularly on the detached ones. Because as we know, we do the site plan review for the detached, and the ZBA does the permit. And for those applications, I'd like to get them up as soon as possible, so we can move them on to the next level. Although the ZBA is about as busy as they've been in quite some time between various fortyBs and various other sort of things, including requests for a non-conforming use of the Shamsi's bonus lots that we talked about until about midnight the other night with the ZBA. So those are sort of the pending applications that we've got. We will put them together. The staff will be working with the applicants to get some complete applications. And the referrals have already gone out to folks, even though we don't have complete information, so they, those departments can comment on them. But my anticipation is by the twenty-eighth, we should at least have one, maybe two of these ready for the board, if that's possible.
Okay, Tom, when we went over this earlier today, the HPP amendment, we thought would wait a little bit. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think being shorthanded is very difficult for us to kind of queue up some additional policy sort of things. The determination of access policy being a bit different, because that actually impacts, you know, you know, some of our daily work. But the HPP, the design guidelines and things like that, I just, you know, I don't know, you know, what sort of capacity we've got to sort of move on those in the midst of the other things we've got to deal with, in the middle of that.
So I'll tell you what. I'll go through this and tell you what Tom and I had discussed earlier today. And if anybody has an objection, please speak up. So HPP amendment, delay that for a little bit.
Great idea.
Okay, the Haddad. Okay, the Haddad, um, the Louis, Louis Larry release. We thought we would keep that in.
For twenty-eight.
Okay, and then we've got, of course, the minutes that we delayed today. The DOA policy, I love saying that.
The dead on arrival policy?
Arrival policy. Determination of access.
Yes.
Um, we keep that on because Williams Road, the Williams Road Street acceptance is just going to be very short. We'll just, we had some questions, and I think Tom will have answers. If he doesn't, we'll just delay it further, because that's for town meeting, but we can put that on, get rid of it. Um, the, you said you're probably going to expect a couple of other accessory apartment applications that we might have to deal with, is that correct, Tom?
Yes, we've got a couple incomplete applications, if, uh, if, obviously, they've still got to be advertised. Uh, so if they can, if those folks can rally and we can get it turned around, uh, we can do those. But as I said, I'd like to get those things out as soon as possible. Uh, usually, we have the applicant meet with Rod prior to. Uh, that's been more difficult for folks for, to meet with Rod, because folks aren't coming into the building. Uh, but in the case of, uh, thirty-two Walker, they'd had that meeting, the applicant, uh, has a, a summer who's working for him, and he just didn't quite hit his stops. So we'll be hopefully sorting through that, uh, over here over the next, uh, week or so.
So if we have those two on, when I talked to Tom about the dome definitive plan, he said it's actually to their benefit to delay it. Because their zoning right now is frozen, and this would just keep it frozen and going out. So it's to their benefit, and I asked if he would speak to Kevin Clower about that. Does that sound okay with you guys?
Yep.
Yeah, I have a question on that.
Yes.
I understand that there may be a lawsuit pending on that again. Is that being held up? Do we have to wait for a resolutional lawsuit before we take it up again?
We do not.
We've dealt with this so many times, and I thought we were pretty close to, to an approval of it.
We, we do not have to, this, any legal action does not impact our, 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 our work on this.
And this one was actually, excuse me, this one was to freeze their zoning. As it, um, I don't remember all the permutations on it.
It was the building height on, uh, the business redevelopment issue between thirty, the, 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 you know, the, uh, two and a half stories and three stories.
Yeah, but no, that wasn't, this was a, a subdivision plan, Jim, that they were putting in to freeze, to get it frozen. It's my recollection, so that they, they couldn't build what they were proposing to build. This would freeze a different type of zoning, is that correct, Tom?
That is correct.
Okay. So that can be put off, and it's to their advantage to put it off. So I'd ask if Tom would speak to Kevin Clower about this to.
Will do.
Represent that. Um, so I think we're okay, we've got a pretty full agenda, considering that we're one full-time person down in the planning office. Um, I think that's a pretty full agenda for the twenty-eighth. Do you all agree?
Yeah.
Okay. Excuse me. So, we've got that full agenda, does anybody have any announcements? And remember, I can only see four faces until Tom gets rid of this full-screen thing.
Hold on.
Okay, now I can see you all. Hi, John, it's good to see you. Um, so does anybody have any announcements?
We postponed, obviously, the affordable housing summit to a date uncertain.
Yeah, I saw, I got an email on that. We're going to find out, aren't we? Um, anybody else have any announcements?
I'd like to, I'd like to make a comment, if I may.
Yes, Paul.
I've been watching the briefings on the Conroy Advisor by Scott McGann, and I think he's doing an excellent job providing information.
Yes, I agree with you, thank you.
I, I do think that he needs to be out in the community a little bit, because David ran into one of the little bodegos. Nobody had face masks, nobody was wearing gloves, and, you know, I, I think we need to bring that to Scott's attention. I know that's totally off the planning board agenda, but since Paul brought it up. Um, I mean, I think anyone that doesn't adhere to this is putting other people at risk.
Tom?
Uh, the Board of Health is currently attempting to hire an assistant health agent. Uh, so if you know anybody who's got skills, uh, they're in the midst of the hiring process when the Corona hit the fan. Uh, and they're hoping to, uh, staff up, but they were down a person and had been for about three or months or so prior to. They had a person they had hired, uh, and the town they were going to leave gave them more money to stay. So they had to hit the reset button. So he's, he's down a person as well, in a time that's awful to be down a person.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, my, my only comment is, I wish you smiled a little bit more.
In these times? It might look for tears. Okay, um, I have no general correspondence, I asked Tom, there was nothing in my packet, so we have no general correspondence. Um, anybody want to bring any future agenda items at this point? Paul?
Make a motion adjourned.
Second.
Yeah, wait a minute.
Oh, sorry.
I'm not going to act on that, because.
I'll, I'll withdraw my second.
Our, our next meeting date on the agenda, and this needs to be firmly stated for those who are watching, is April twenty-eighth, and I'm presuming we will have this at our normal meeting time, Tom?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So six thirty, not three?
It would be six thirty. I love the afternoon, you all know that, and I think probably a few of you others like afternoon too, but.
Well, we can start, we can start at three and make sure everybody gets on in time.
Okay, so our next meeting will be April twenty-eighth at six thirty, as usual. And I want to be able.
At six thirty?
Six thirty, that's when we normally meet, Tuesday at six thirty.
So just before that, it was going to be at three?
No, no.
Now, somebody said not at three?
Not at three.
So it is April twenty-eighth at six thirty, okay, Tom?
Yes, I wanted to point, in the chat, we got a message from Greg Banworth, IT director, says, Tom, just a heads up, when you're screen sharing, try to zoom in as much as possible. FCT's broadcast feed is in standard definition, so it's very hard to see that detail. So people are paying attention to us and helping us with things, and I will try to make sure that we're able to zoom in and get better sort of graphics to get to that.
And this, aside from the fact of giving our IT staff a little bit of a respite, so they didn't have to stay up late tonight, is so that we could relax a little bit and get these wrinkles unwrinkled a bit, hopefully.
And IT has been killing, and I appreciate the help they've done for us. Uh, we couldn't be doing business without them, so thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Jim?
Also, just to point out for the public, uh, for Bob, he's on his wife's computer, so it looks like Vivian's, uh, on, on the planning board here, because your, your name is there. You might be able to change the settings on your computer, either make that go away or put up your own name. But you, you're showing up as Vivian, and people are going to say, who the hell is Vivian?
You could just make a sign to hang around your neck, Bob.
Bob on the beer.
No, just, just hang a sign that says not Vivian. Just have a not, not Vivian sign, you'll be fine.
Yeah.
Okay, so I really want to thank the people who have gone out of their way to make this possible, this meeting possible today. And I think we've understood a few. John, are you going to be okay getting on next time, do you think, or?
The whole time, but I just couldn't, uh, you couldn't see me.
Oh.
And I don't know what I, I don't know what I did to make it so you could see me, so.
It's to stop video, it makes you go away if you stop the video. See, I have a picture, the backup picture, but it comes back again.
Down in the, down in the bottom, where there's a mute and there's a, a stop video. Okay, so when you are blank, you, you click that, and there's a red line through stop video. Same thing with the, the speaker symbol down there, if you go mute, you click that and a red line, okay?
Okay.
All right, sorry, we didn't get your vote on these things then, John.
Me too, I'm sorry.
So, so for the record, John, every time I measure and cut twice, the board's always too short. So we all have our skill set, and mine is not your skill set, so thanks for being.
And Pam, did you get your problems worked out, so that there won't be anything next time, a problem next time, do you think?
Well, I have a couple weeks to try to figure out how to, uh, how to get this onto my laptop.
Okay, because that would make it a whole lot better. You're bobbling around on, you know, because you're on your cellphone, I'm assuming.
Right, it's just my, my laptop, my dad bought me right before he died in two thousand and six. So my Mac, my MacBook is kind of old.
Okay, well, so you'll try to work on that one, I think, John, you understand why you didn't have your picture up. Okay, so now I can, yes, Paul?
I, there's a motion to adjourn, because we're.
I know.
My press conference in Falmouth at five o'clock, so I gotta get ready.
Okay. Meeting is adjourned.